Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14, 2019. Do we have a motion to accept the school committee minutes? Second? No objection, motion passes. Okay, so next, we have a brief presentation. Since this is our last school committee of the year, and also come January, there'll be some changes on the school committee with newly elected officials, we wanted to recognize some people in the committee. I want to recognize Rosemary Carlisle in appreciation of her devoted and invaluable services as the 2019 Chelsea School Committee Delegate to the Chelsea City Council on this day, December 5th. Ms. Carlisle? For her devoted and invaluable services as the 2019 Chelsea School Committee Vice Chair on this 5th day of December. Next, I want to recognize a person who came on late in the year, and I asked him to please join another committee, and he was like, "Okay." Henry David Wilson in appreciation of his devoted and invaluable services as the 2019 Chelsea School Committee Delegate to the Shore Educational Collaborative. We do have a certificate for Mr. DePato, who is ending his term with us. He's not here, but I'll make sure that he receives it. And last but not least, on behalf of the whole school committee, we want to present our superintendent.
For her dedicated service as chairman of the school committee for like 20 years.
It's five years, but my son said, "You should try six months." It would be like Brady who had six rings, but five is good.
Well, five plaques. She's not getting rings.
The whole school committee could come up front with Dr. Burke so we could take a picture. I'm going to save my words for next Thursday, but it's been an honor and a pleasure working alongside you, Dr. Burke. You've done so much for our district, and I know you have many opportunities to leave us, and you stuck here until your goals were done for our students. The Student Opportunity Act, I give it all to you because you were there at the State House, really advocating for our students and fighting for what is right. Words can't express how much appreciation I have and how Chelsea has been fortunate and blessed to have you here as our superintendent. So, thank you. Okay, moving along, back to business. Next, we have our public comment section. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the school committee, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name and address, please. And you each get four minutes.
Hello? You hear me?
Oh, yes.
My name is Angel Mesa, and I live in 5 Clay Street in Chelsea. And tonight, I, well, first let me start to give you my appreciation for your work, Janet, for you as a chairperson, a chairwoman. You have done a good job, and I think we, I appreciate the work that all you put into the school committee because it's very important. What really bring me here tonight is part of the, is a resolution that I read that they're going to be presented tonight. That means renaming the Columbus Day for Indigenous Day, and I think it does a really good vision, and I believe it's Kelly Garcia who proposed that, and I will congratulate you even though it hasn't passed yet, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right vision for the future. We have to start to look into those particular memories or days that have been put into us, and sometime our children and our students do not understand, and so that probably is very important. The indigenous people, according to one of the greatest writers, Eduardo Galeano from Uruguay, who has been extensively writer about the sacrifice of the indigenous people, the oppression, the exclusion, the discrimination, and I think it's very, very important that you do that step today. There have been like more than 20 cities that have passed similar resolutions of changing their Columbus Day for Indigenous Days. Unbelievable, but some people do not put attention to the things that's going on outside the United States, but what happened in Amazon and Brazil, what happened, you know, the exclusion and the killings of indigenous people is going on in Ecuador and Bolivia. Recently, a really great leader was removed from power with all kinds of excuses, but he was doing a good job until he started fighting for the natural resources of his country, so he became an enemy of the multinationals, so he was removed. And now they have all kinds of persecution against the people who support, his name is Evo Morales. So, I say this to know that we in Chelsea are going to solve the problem, but I think it's good for us to take a, you pass this resolution tonight that will lead us to even examine the curriculum, you know, with the really history, what happened, are we discovered by historical Columbus, oh, this is a lie that we've been carrying out for generations and generations. This is not again particular nationality, but it's against those who colonized, and the colonialism is still something that we can accept colonialism, and we need more, we have to fight, and we have to struggle against all kinds of discrimination, because I believe the hate based on race, on gender, all type of discrimination is a disease in society. So, I think you had, you're going to do it by pass that resolution, a great thing to give it greatest standard to this city and to this organization, and thanks for the opportunity, and I hope you pass that resolution, I will be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roberto Jimenez Rivera from 40 Eleanor Street in Chelsea. So, today, the school committee will be taking up a proposal to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day on our school calendar. I'm here to support a vote in favor of this policy change. Columbus is responsible for initiating the transatlantic slave trade by bringing native Arawaks from the Caribbean back to Spain. This later led to the African slave trade that lasted centuries and still to this day has had lasting impacts on indigenous and black communities across the American continent. Furthermore, as a governor, Columbus and his people tortured and murdered countless native people, going as far as cutting people's hands off for not bringing him enough gold every three months. The mass genocide of native people in the Caribbean, including the Taínó people in my native Puerto Rico, can be directly attributed to his arrival to this hemisphere. For all of these reasons, I do not believe that we should celebrate Columbus Day. On the other hand, honoring indigenous peoples, including those whose land we stand on today, is long overdue. Indigenous people inhabited Latin America for centuries before the arrival of the colonizers, and today, many Latin American countries still have thriving indigenous populations. Many Chelsea students are descended from these indigenous groups, and I think it's time that we celebrate their heritage instead of a man who's responsible for erasing their cultures. I hope that you will vote in favor of this motion today and that the city council will follow your lead in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, my name is Pedro de Hesvo, I'm from the U.S. Census Bureau, and we got a program that I leave a couple of flyers for you guys to take in consideration. My jobs in the city of Chelsea and different cities around Massachusetts, they are hard to count in the incoming 2020 census. For that reason, the Census Bureau prepared a program called statistics in the school, and in this flyer that you're going to read later, we show what are the ten benefits, why we're going to implement the statistics in the school for a student. So, it's important that we take it to the student, we prepare all this in the Census Bureau webpage that you can teach the student about the science, about the importance when they start receiving the invitation next year by big March to complete the 2020 census questionnaire. So, it's really important, they already implementation in different districts, for example, one of my districts, the city of Brockton, I called to the school superintendent, and the school superintendent, they appointed Eleison, the same happened with the city here of Chelsea, so they got a complete town committee, because we want the city of Chelsea. I worked in 2010, and in 2000, here in the city of Chelsea, doing the same work, creating awareness about telling people of the city of Chelsea that completed questionnaire, especially the parent. Everybody can, because for the next 10 years, we got to stay with this number. So, that's the reason we want to implement this program in the school, and the next school superintendent, he had the power to appoint somebody to work with us, to get the program implemented in all the school districts in the city of Chelsea for the benefit of the student or the city of Chelsea. So, I have my business card here, and anything that you can help me out with this job, it got to be tremendous for contribution for the city of Chelsea.
Thank you.
Hello, honorable members of the school committee. I'm Amali Vidal, 140 Highland Street, also your city council president. Bear with me, I didn't prepare any comments. I'm here for a couple of reasons. So, I heard about the resolution introduced by school committee woman Kelly Garcia with respect to the Columbus Day Indigenous People Holiday. And so, I started to ask around in the community, as I usually do, to try to kind of see where people fall on this topic, and what I found was that there are people in the Italian community that feel that this is a celebration of their heritage. Personally, I think we should just create an Italian Heritage Day. But I do feel that we have an obligation here in terms of the schools. I remember growing up in the Chelsea school system and for Thanksgiving coloring little turkeys and little pilgrims and little Native Americans with the little feathers, and it's the way that these messages are ingrained into our brains. And while, while I serve on the city council, and it might not be something that I would push on the city council unless I had support from my colleagues in the community, then I'd be all for it, I feel that as a body that represents the schools in our system, that there's an obligation to really adequately inform and educate the students. And so, I think that as long as we're glorifying people that we know created genocide against indigenous people that are the majority of the people in this community, then maybe that there is an option for us to really support what school committee woman Kelly Garcia is introducing. So, I am here to speak in favor of it. I also want to make sure that all of the different cultures that have come through this community, because we have people from every sector of the world, don't feel left behind. So, maybe there's a conversation we could have so we can commemorate our Italian community as well, so they don't feel like they're being left behind. But I just think it's important for people like me and many of us in the community that are, we don't have, our culture has been erased, and I think it's important for us to be able to have those real conversations and for us to be able to tell our stories in order to, you know, teach our people. So, as a body that represents the school, yes, I think that it would be a move in the right direction. So, thank you for that. And the second thing that I just wanted to say is thank you to Superintendent Mary Burke for all of your, I'm sorry, I'm out of breath, I don't know why. For all of your years of service to Chelsea, you and I, since I got into office, have had some tough conversations. We've had some good conversations, most of them have been good, and even through the tough ones, I've grown, I have seen how much you care for the city, I have seen you advocate fiercely for the very complex needs of this community, you are a hero. Looking forward to working with the new superintendent and the new assistant superintendent, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done here, and thank you for everybody for all the work that you do in this community, and congratulations to the school committee elect at large, Roberto Jimenez, and looking forward to continue working with everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Garcia, and I live on 461 Crescent Avenue.
My name is John Dowell, and I live on 20 River Beach Parkway. We are here from our AP U.S. History class at Chelsea High School, trying to discuss changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So, like John said, we're here because we are part of APUSH. Alana Asher teaches us, and we were actually part of APural History last year, and we did a project on Columbus and if people believe that it should be changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day or not, and majority of it was yes. And so, now, we're here because we heard Kelly Garcia was pushing for this, and we really do believe this is an important change that has to be, you know, that has to happen, especially in a community like Chelsea, which is filled with, oh my god, my throat, with Latinx people, especially since the majority of the people Columbus had killed were our ancestors. I know personally, I'm Puerto Rican, which means Christopher Columbus was responsible for the genocide of the native Taínó people in Puerto Rico, and which really breaks my heart, to be honest. And to be honest, I'm going to say something really harsh right now, like no vulgar language, but this is a man who was responsible for watering our family trees, and unfortunately, all our family trees have been watered with blood, tears, and unfortunately semen. A bunch of natives were killed, raped, and treated so badly, put into slavery. I do not see a way how we can respect this man. Like Amali was saying, I do believe also we should have Italian Heritage Day, and it's valid that these people do believe like, hey, like, we should have a day too, and that Christopher Columbus celebrates that for them. However, in this new era of justice, we do have to be really strict in who we respect and who we do not respect, because I know that in my family, they don't, they didn't know Christopher Columbus was like a bad man who was responsible for killing all of us. It had to be me using my power of education, which, thank you, Mary Burke, I appreciate that, to tell them like, hey, like, this isn't okay, like, our ancestors were killed, we were murdered, like, it's not okay. And going off of that, I'm only here to address that it has to be changed, but also, if we do this, the curriculum has to change. When we discuss Christopher Columbus, we have to be honest with our kids. Our kids learn about the death of black people, and, sorry, I'm like stressed. We get taught slavery in the second grade. There's no reason why we can't learn that Christopher Columbus was a man who killed a bunch of natives. We get fed this like little happy, perfect dream of history, which we have to stop. If we want to be honest with our kids and really like emphasize a path of like social justice and a bright future, this has to change now, we have to start being honest. We cannot expect our kids to be great and rise above everything else and rise above where they, you know, come from and then really just shine if we don't know the whole truth. And that's pretty much all I had to say. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing that there's, is it anybody? The section of public comment is closed. Moving along to the report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Superintendent-elect Dr. Almi Abada to come forward so that she can give her update on the transition.
Good evening, Superintendent Burke, Chair Villas, and members of the school committee. I am giving what is probably one of five updates, and this will be my last update on the transition. The transition is coming to an end, and I have finished my entry planning. We are in the process of analyzing data and writing an entry report that you will receive in January. So, our first school committee meeting back will be a presentation of the entry findings, and I am excited to share all that I've been learning. It has been a journey, and through all of this transition, I want to thank again the school committee for their wisdom and for their, for your insight in hiring me and having Superintendent Burke mentor me and work with me during this transition. I feel so ahead of the ballgame, I understand the organization so that way we can move the work. We're going to continue to build on success and take the school to the next level and honor the work that has happened in Chelsea Public Schools. And I just, I can't thank you enough for the gift that you've given me. I have met, when I first got hired to do this work, the recruiter who hired me was reaching out to me, said, "There's a little special condition," and I was like, "Well, gee, what is this?" He's like, "The superintendent is currently going to be on board," and I was like, "That's odd, I'd never heard of that." But that works for me because I was so interested in succession planning, and it was perfect for me. And little did I know what a wonderful woman Dr. Burke is, little did I know that she would be a mentor and a friend. So, I feel like I've just made a wonderful mentor and friend, so thank you. So, that said, Cabinet, as part of our transition, on Mondays and Wednesdays, or every day that we meet, have met with Mary, she goes through and is pouring into all of us as much as possible. And as she's pouring into us, she has these little nuggets of wisdom that we have called coins, where's Christine, Mary's Moments. So, every morning, we get Mary's Moments, and so, I'm going to go ahead and hand this off to Sarah to start, and we have a little PowerPoint that should be coming up real soon. It's waking up.
Okay, you do know, you didn't tell me about this, right?
We can't tell you.
It's part of my transition. These are Mary's Moments. So, always a teacher first. I believe everybody knows, but in case you don't, I think Mary taught every grade except one. Which one did you miss?
I've done first grade, I've done third, I think I skipped second, but I did high school and middle school.
And college.
And college.
So, those second graders missed out, but you got them along the way. And she has been a fierce advocate.
Mary Moment Three, she leads by example. Dr. Burke always found the time to visit our schools and our students, and she walks everywhere she goes, come rain or shine, always in heels. And Mary Moment Number Four, she likes to write things down and repeat them back to others. In her merry way, she would teach her cabinet to write down what staff would say and then repeat it back to staff to help staff process information.
Mary Moment Number Five, no I in team, and you get to wear, get new clothes so that you look like all the other people that live here, work for the district, and she lives what she says because there's no I in Mary M. Burke. The four frames of leadership. So, Mary has helped us always make sure we look at all problems from multiple dimensions and from multiple people's perspectives, which is helpful here in everything else that we do. Those four lenses are really important. And then, we also know Mary has very special lenses where she can use them to telescope into the schools and know everything that is going on in every hallway in every school, and this is the first part of the lens. I want to get the binoculars as soon as I can as well.
So, the Mary Moment Number Seven, there are host and ghost systems. So, the body might look like mine, but the face is Mary Burke's because she would not give me a picture of herself doing this. But in Cabinet, she does her hands like this, and she's always teaching us about a host versus a ghost system. A host system outlives the person. She frequently reminds us, if she gets hit by a bus the next day, that is a host system. If it lasts, if she leaves and it goes away, then that's a ghost system. So, this is, so Mary Moment Number Eight, Family First. Mary always reminds us that no matter what's going on in life, family always comes first, and she models that to all of us, and she always makes sure that all of her staff members are taking care of themselves and their families.
So, when I took on the superintendency, the one thing that scared me the most is calling a snow day. So, when we had to call a snow day the other day, Mary pulls me aside, says, "Almi, come on, let's go to, come to my office, let's call a snow day," and we did it, and I was like, "That was it?" And she said, and don't do this alone. So, there's this telephone texting with the local superintendents.
Fifteen of them.
Fifteen. So, if we all call it, we all go down together if we all make a mistake. So, we're saying, "Don't call them alone." And I've heard Mary say, "Tag, you're it" a lot lately. As I was like finishing this, I'm working on this a little bit last night, and I got a text from Mary that said, "Tag, you're it," and I was like, "Okay." So, we have noticed as a cabinet, she's like, "Well, Tag, you guys are it." So, we're it. And Mary, thank you. And, um, very, Mary, thank you so much from the bottom of all our hearts and, um, passing the torch to us.
I have comments at the end of this meeting and I purposely asked to go last because I won't get through them, but, um, thank you. It, it is definitely bringing tears to my eyes, so thank you for the thoughtfulness.
So we still on report?
Oh, yeah. It's not quite tagger it yet, huh? Um, res, um, report of the academics, um, student achievement, Assistant Superintendent, um, Sarah Kent, please.
All right. Um, so a couple of quick things. I did want to let, before I do the indicators of success as usual, I did want to just let the school committee know that this coming week, the first grade, first standards-based report card that I told you about at the retreat this fall will be going home. So, um, just in case, you know, first grade parents are asking you, um, the, it's on a trimester, which is a new calendar for first graders, um, and that first standards-based report card will be going home next week. Um, similarly, I know, um, we had a public comment from the census and I want to let you know that we are working with the census. I actually met with them, um, the Chelsea representatives of the census today along with our parent liaisons. So we are working hard to get that going well. All right, indicators of success. So today, we actually have quite a few indicators because the quarter ended. Um, so we have both the monthly, the quarterly, and our usual appendix. So if we could start on page three, which is the attendance. Um, you can see that our goal is ninety-five percent and we are meeting that goal in grades one through eight. We are very close in kindergarten and pre-K. And as I report, most months, we are still actively working on improving our attendance at the high school level. If you could turn to page four, you will see the indicator four, which is about grade four schoo, students get, receiving a three or better in reading, writing, math, and science. So to explain this one, each, um, report cards for elementary school students other than grade one, which is changing now, but has a four-point scale. Um, ones, twos, threes, and fours, threes and fours being the better ones. Um, four being that they have met the standard, you know, they're, they're, met the grade level expectations. So if we're looking at the quarter one results, um, you will see that they are quite low, but at the same time, you remember that they have the rest of the year to grow. So actually, although those numbers seem low, they are quite comparable to where we were last year at this time. If you can turn to page five and look at indicator five, which is about eighth grade, this is a more traditional grading system where you can see the goal is to be C or better. And you'll see that it's about seventy-five percent in these four subjects, but we are doing a bit better in writing and math than we were last year. If you turn to page six, um, and talk about the dropout rate, this month, well, the month of November, we had twelve additional students drop out in the month of November, rising, raising our total to thirty-two for the year. Um, you will see that that's two more than last year. Last year at this time, we had thirty. Um, but you'll see that we also have more students. We have about a hundred more students than we did last year. So kind of strangely, the percentage is the same as it was last year, like down to a hundredth, which is kind of freaky to me. Um, but it is actually sitting at about two percent, which is great. We're trying to keep it down. If you look at the chart on the bottom of the page, you can see how that breaks down and you'll see that for regular education students, um, we are doing, and L students who are, also have disabilities, we're doing extremely well, under one percent, they're actually at zero percent and one. Students with disabilities are doing quite well, but we are continuing to struggle and, um, do our best to keep our L students. We have lost twenty-three this year. On page seven, you'll see the details about who the twelve were that left this month. You'll see that ten of them went to location unknown. And what that means is that they, we do not know why they left or what they plan to do after they leave. Um, they just, they came off of our rolls. And as you see in the third bullet, eight of those were L students. Um, it was pretty evenly spread across the grade levels, however, um, with four in grade nine, two-ten, three-eleven, and two and twelve. And there was one student who was in a special education, um, placement that is a older student, that's the SP student. On page nine, we can move to mobility. And we are having a lot of movement, uh, so far this school year. We have gained two hundred students since the beginning of the year and we have had six hundred and seventy-six either come or go. So that is a ton of movement. We've had ten, almost eleven percent of our kids have either come or gone already, um, which is really impressive. And that has happened across grade spans with eighty-seven more kids at the high school, forty at the middle school, fifty-seven at the elementary, and sixteen at the ELC kindergarten. So we have gained students everywhere, um, but the most at the high school. And if you turn to page ten, our quarterly, um, outcomes for the high school for grade nine and ten students, I'm happy to report that the grade nine students are doing very well. You'll see that we have seventy-five more students in grade nine this year than last year, um, with almost five hundred. And we are doing really well at, um, helping students not fail as many multiple courses. So both in ninth and tenth grade, you'll see that the numbers for failing three courses or four courses has dropped. In ninth grade, we're also doing quite well with two courses or one course. So the overall percentage is twenty-seven percent of kids are failing one or more courses. But the good news is most that are in that category are failing only one. Um, and then in tenth grade, similarly, we have a higher percentage of kids that are failing a course or more, but most of those are one course. And we're working hard, we're doing data down to the student level to figure out supports for those students, figure out what courses need, um, some support. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody has questions for Ms. Garcia?
Hmm, hi.
Um, are the dropout numbers, or do the dropout numbers also include the mobility numbers?
Yes. Yeah, they do. So when kids leave the high school, like for place unknown, um, that's mobility and dropout.
Got it. And is there any way we can separate the two?
Not from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're held accountable for every child or every student who does leave us, even if, and many of our, our students and families leave and don't tell us when they're leaving or where they're going. And so, um, that's, that's a dropout against us. But that doesn't mean, um, we still have a dropout issue that, that needs to be continually addressed. And we've always said in this district, one dropout is one dropout too many. Um, in terms of separating, it's just in, in terms of what we collect, um, reasons why they've left, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other question for Ms. Kent?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Um, Madam Chair, I am commending to the report, the, um, the personnel update, which is enclosure B. We have six new hires, we have zero resignations, retirements, and terminations, and we have two promotions and transfers. I am also commending to the record enrollment, um, the enrollment report, which is enclosure C. We have six thousand three hundred nine students in district, we have one hundred seventy-three students out of district, for a total enrollment of six thousand four hundred and eighty-two. Announcements for this, um, month, December sixth, so this is the season of a lot of winter concerts, so please, um, you know, make sure that you are accessing the schedule online and certainly attend as many as you possibly can. The kids love to see you, the staff loves to see you. So the Kelly School Concert is at nine AM on twelve-six, which is tomorrow. The Clark Avenue School Family Night is at five-thirty on December tenth. The December eleventh Clark Avenue School Winter Concert is at six o'clock. And then you can rush over to Chelsea High School for the winter concert at Chelsea High School at seven-thirty PM. Um, we also have the subcommittee meetings for this week, um, for this month. Budget and Finance will be at five-thirty on December nineteenth and Human Resources will be at six PM on December nineteenth. December recess for schools, December twenty-third through the first of, um, December, New Year's Day. And so, um, schools will return on the second of January. School Committee Organizational Meeting will take place at six-thirty on the second of January with a full school committee meeting at seven PM, January second. And I also would like you to, um, to make sure that you're paying attention to the school site council schedules. And I, I say this also for, um, the community at large who cable TV is, is, um, is taping for. But school site council meetings, every year, we have, um, people talking about, they, they didn't know about the budget process, they didn't, um, had, they, they felt they didn't have a voice in the budget process. Part of the whole organizational process in our district is that we do have monthly school site councils where you can attend and have a voice in the budget that is being prepared for the next fiscal year. In this case, it would be the fiscal year twenty-one. There are other meetings where the, your voice is heard, certainly there's the, the large community meeting, there's the public hearing, um, there are also, um, for the staff, um, for the, for the unions, we tend to also present in the unions because our, our teachers are also our stakeholders. But there are multiple venues and times and opportunities to have your voice in the budget process and to have yourself heard. As well as this year, um, Dr. Albeda has done a thorough job of community meetings, um, and listening to the desires and the hopes and the dreams of this community and the various stakeholders, which does also inform budget, um, moving forward. But I do want us to understand that school site council meetings, they are open meetings, they are posted, and you should avail yourself. Parents should be encouraged to constantly avail themselves of these meetings. And many of our parents, if they're a Kelly School parent or they're a Brown Middle School parent, they would probably feel more comfortable going to that smaller meeting and sharing their wishes and dreams than a large public hearing where you come up and you're stating your, um, your address and your name and you, you're on camera and everything else. So, um, I encourage all of us to continually educate the community in this area, so. Madam Chair, that concludes my report, until later.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to subcommittee reports. Do we have a second? Any objections? No? Okay, so we set all the subcommittee minutes. Moving along, unfinished business, we have none. Now we go on to new business. First item under new business, consideration and action to approve a resolution regarding the changing of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in Chelsea Public Schools. Explanation, Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway system that welcome and educates all students. Together with the Chelsea School Committee and the greater community, Chelsea Public School is committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigrant status, ethnicity, race, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, disability, sex, gender, identity, socioeconomic status, or beliefs. Chelsea Public Schools not only respects the diversity of its students and family, it celebrates this diversity as an asset and seeks to promote multiculturalism and appreciation for people's differences among staff and students alike. In celebrating our community's diversity, Chelsea Public School is committed to teaching and accepting the factual history of Columbus and transforming the second Monday of the month of October as a day to celebrate Indigenous people. This allows us to make a connection between the painful history and the ongoing marginalization, discrimination, and poverty that Indigenous communities face to this day. Today, we, the community of Chelsea, will take a step forward in studying, honoring, and celebrating the people Columbus enslaved and terrorized. This resolution reaffirms Chelsea Public School's focus on promoting and elevating tolerance, inclusiveness, individualism, equity, unity, and diversity by resolving to work closely with the city, county, state, and other local municipalities and community organizations to ensure our students and families are offered a space where all cultures and identities are honored, welcomed, and respected. Roll call.
Resolution regarding the changing of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in Chelsea Public Schools. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Carlisle?
No.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, two absent, two no votes. The motion carries.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, two no, motion passes. Resolution has been adopted to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I'll give you a second, yeah? Go ahead.
My reasoning why I voted against this, uh, resolution is, it's nothing personal against a, a person who presented to us. I just think that we, as a country, is changing, trying to change history so mu, so many different ways. Ever since we have, uh, who we have right now in the White House, a lot of history from black history, Latino history, Asian-American history is being changed, is being challenged every single day. And as a black person, there are so many people that I can look at and say, "We need to change that, we can't celebrate this person, we can't celebrate Washington's birthday, we can't celebrate Abraham Lincoln's birthday, we can't celebrate different people that we celebrate." And when I was in school in, you know, class nineteen-eighty-four, Lancers, Lawrence High, thank you very much, we didn't have the history that the young kids are having now in schools. You know, all I can tell you about my black history that I learnt in, in high school is, is mainly that black people were slaves, but there's more to it. I remember reading about Columbus and how he got all three ships and he came here and he did all this stuff. I know he didn't discover America, we all know he didn't discover America. That was a false lie that was embedded in our brains. I think that we as a board, it's kind of risky to start changing history. I think, um, when the president started doing, he was doing, changing history, taking statues down, different coun, different states and stuff, history is there. We can't change history, we can only embrace history. And Chelsea, way before the way the city is now, the diversity the city is now, it was another group of people living here before. The city is changing, it's going in so many different directions. And to keep looking at our city as one, one city of one, um, ethnicity, to me, is an insult. And I think that we need to understand that our city has grown, our city is changing, and that we need more information, we need to do more research on changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Day. I think that there's so many other things that we need to work on here in our city right now. And changing a holiday to satisfy a few people is not the way we should start. And that's it.
Sure, Ms. Garcia.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for sharing how you feel. One thing I refuse to do is to celebrate a man who slaughtered and murdered many millions of Indigenous people, including your ancestors. We have the power to change history by educating our students on what really happened. That is why we have a voice, we use our voice. So it's not to satisfy a few people, it is to give our students the real history of what happened. I refuse to continue celebrating a man who did wrong by us. And that is not to, to discredit or to not celebrate Italian heritage. Let's create- Let's create, let's use our city councilors, let's talk to our state legislators, let's use our voice to celebrate Italian Heritage Month. I'm totally for that. But we have a Black History Month, we have a Latino Heritage Month. We don't have an Indigenous heritage. We don't celebrate the people that were killed and slaughtered and who are continuously being abused still to this day, in 2019. That I will not stand by. So that is my reasoning for proposing this resolution. And I'm so honored and so happy that it got passed. Because we need to take a stand right now, 2019, that we will not continue celebrating a murderer.
Ms. Carlyle, you had something to say?
Well, I heard two sides tonight. And the reason I voted no is because I don't believe we should be changing history. We should be moving forward to change other things that's going on in this, in the United States of America. And, and if it takes to change a holiday, I'm not far, I mean, a, a man that we were grown up to know that he did good things for us. We should move forward and change things that are going on in the United States right now. And we have the ability to change those things and not change history. History should not be changed because if you're going to change it, like Mr. Wilson said, you could change a lot of things that were going on in the past that many of these people abused people in certain ways. But I'm, at this time, I just felt it wasn't time to change history. And let's move forward and change the things that we should be changing. And that is to make sure that the United States of America is underneath the bright regime and move forward to make sure that all the people in the United States are heard. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
I very seldom speak. But I do feel that, I think at this point, Kelly, thank you so much for bringing this up and bringing it to our attention, to, to pay attention to this. I think at this point, the people that have their opinions over whether we should vote in favor of this or against it have already made their decisions. And they've had enough information to come to their decisions and why they came to them. So, I don't think we'll change how certain people feel. The ones that, I think the vote says, pretty much, what we needed to say was that this is a holiday that does need to be changed. As a respect, we can't change history. You're right. We did celebrate Columbus Day for too many years. We can't change the fact that we celebrated it. We can change the fact that we won't celebrate it anymore. So we are changing the future. We're not changing the past. The past we can't change. We already celebrated this way too many times. Now we can celebrate that we won't be celebrating it anymore. So, I think at this point, we'll just let it go and, but it, we passed, it passed. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for the below-listed federal grants for the school year 2019-2020. Early childhood special education targeted improvement for $10,000. Mass grad for the REACH program, up to $45,325. Turnaround Assistant Grant, $270,000. Funding for early childhood special education and mass grad REACH have each increased slightly from the amount anticipated in the FY 2020 budget. In addition, this year's turnaround assistant grant will be larger than anticipated because DESI has included a new program in the grant funds. The new program is called Acceleration Academics, and funding to be used to provide extra time on learning in small groups during February and April vacations for students in the middle and high school grades. The budget for this effort is $160,000, leaving a balance of $110,000 to be used for traditional tag activities. Funding is provided for the cost of staff, professional development stipends, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, construction services, and technology. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Motion to accept the awarded allocations for the following federal grants for school year 2019-2020. Early childhood special education targeted improvement, $10,000. Mass grad REACH, up to $45,325,000. Turnaround Assistant Grant, $270,000 plus. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, two absent. The motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Next, consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for the below-listed private grants for school year 2019-2020. The A.C. Ratcheski Foundation IOP for $15,000, and the System for Adult Basic Education Support for $200. Explanation: The intergenerational literacy program funding from the A.C. Ratcheski Foundation to be used for staffing, professional development, and other program-specific activities. Supplies materials and technology. In addition, the System for Adult Basic Education Support has generously donated eight $25 market basket gift cards for a total of $200 to the IOP in recognition for their participation in a continuous improvement planning process. The gift cards will be distributed to needy families during the holiday season. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Motion to accept private grants for school year 2019-2020 in the amount of $15,200. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, two absent. The motion carries.
Seven affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Next, consideration and action to amend student athletic stipends within the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for the 2019-2020 to expand stipends for middle school athletic coaches to additional sports. Explanation: Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly positions and salaried positions. The schedule also includes stipend rates for athletic coaches. With the exception, exception of cross-country. Coach stipends today have been exclusively at the high school level. The proposed amendment to the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules will add three new middle school lead coach positions, including basketball coach for boys and girls, and spring track to acknowledge the expansion of the middle school sports this year. The stipend for each will be $3,200. Additional amendments to the schedule include appetizing the titles and separately identifying high school and middle school stipends. Roll call.
Motion to amend student athletic stipends within the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2019-2020 to expand stipends for middle school athletic coaches to additional sports. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, two absent. The motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Next, Dr. Burke, would you like to?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am just, and the next item on the agenda is a donation from both my husband and myself to Chelsea Public Schools. I just want to explain, last spring, when our team, our illustrious team there talked about my retirement and how we would celebrate and what did I wa- what did I want, I thought long and hard. And so, what I really wanted was, I wanted a fundraiser. And the fundraiser is for our Visual and Performing Arts Department. One of the things that has always broken my heart over the last five years in particular, four to five years of the, of the budget crisis, is that I held the department's harmless. I didn't cut anything, but I never gave them anything extra. So in effect, they have, the last few years, they have been working at a deficit amount. And so, as a fundraiser, my husband and I did not want the cost of the food coming from what was raised. And so, this is a true 100% fundraiser. So the, the, the donation of $25, all of it will go to the Visual and Performing Arts Department.
Thank you. Okay, consideration and action to accept a donation from Robert and Mary Burke in the amount of $800 for Dr. Burke's thank you celebration. The Burke family is generously donating up to 800 in food and beverages to the thank you celebration for Dr. Mary Burke, who will be retiring later this month. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Motion to accept a donation from Robert and Mary Burke in an amount of two, up to 800 for Dr. Burke's thank you celebration. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, two absent. The motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Okay. Next, communication. I was going to read, we have a letter from the students regarding Columbus Day name change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. But since we had two that showed up and spoke on it, so I want to commend it to the record that there is enclosure. I, there's a letter from the AP students, the World History Class students. Okay, so now, before we end, I want to turn it over to Dr. Burke.
For the last time.
For her final night.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I am going to make my remarks from the podium.
Okay.
So this is sort of practice for next Thursday night, I think, so make sure I can get through it emotionally. It has been my distinct pleasure to have been an educator in the school, in this school district for over 30 years. Now, if we add the fact that I was also a student in the school district from kindergarten to 12, we're, we're talking now, we're approaching under 45 years, but, you know, it's over 40. I have been a part of this deep, deep Chelsea Public Schools community. And my love and passion is deep. For the last almost 16 years, I have served you as assistant superintendent, then deputy superintendent. In the last nine years, almost nine, as superintendent. Some of you were on the school committee before I came. Rosemarie Carlyle. Others began their service at the same time as me. Jeanette, Anna, Lucia. And finally, others have begun your service in the last few years, but also just as I'm getting ready to leave. It doesn't matter. You are servant leaders and you are called to this position. And you are called to have it deeply in your heart, always. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the love and support you have shown me over the years. Together, we have built a school system that will outlast all of us. It is a host system. We have changed the perception and reputation of the Chelsea Schools. We are recognized now as a leader in public education. We defy expectations and we defy the odds. Take a look at the Student Opportunity Act. We changed a culture together. No, we actually transformed a culture. We transformed a community. We transformed from a community that used to criticize our public schools to one who loves, embraces, and wraps around our public schools. As Jocelyn Post, the salutatorian, last year, at last year's graduation class said, "Coming from Chelsea is now a blessing, not a burden." I will go to my grave with that emblazoned in my mind. Across the state, we are known as the little scrappy school district that lives their mission statement. We live and we breathe, we welcome and we educate all. We will be our students' bridge to success. We'll build on their assets and what they and their families bring to us. In particular, their language. We build opportunities. We build access. We build equity. It is now time, however, to welcome your new leadership team at central office. We have accomplished so much together. But I have left things, not intentionally, of course, but things that are not complete and things that are undone. That's going to be their job now. I ask you, as servant leaders, as mission-driven people, to wrap around them as they are the leaders, the servant leaders, moving forward. Support them. Allow them to fly. Fly alongside of them. The future is bright. The vision is strong from this team. Set more goals alongside of them. Dream more dreams, but do it alongside of them. Dream the dreams of the what-ifs, of possibilities. That was the theme of my very first convocation speech. Dr. Abada is remarkable. You could not have hired a better successor for me. Because I feel confident handing this district to her. So thank you for that gift to me of feeling confidence. This team is going to astound you. Have faith in them, trust them, embrace them, and they're going to, they're going to astound you. So I end my comments tonight with a charge for you as servant leaders, school committee. Tag, you're it. Tag, you're it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. And I just wanted to say a few words as outgoing chairman, that I've sat here for the past five years. I just want to thank the team, because if I've done this, it's because you guys have supported me. Because without your support, I wouldn't be able to do this work. I just want to remind everybody, as we come back in January, a new year for us, we'll have a new member on the committee, that really stay focused of why we are here. Let's be very respectful of each other, whether we agree or disagree, that is fine. We don't always have to agree. Because what good is it if we're always agreeing, right? We do need somebody to disagree or maybe challenge us. But please do it respectfully. And once this meeting is done and we're out, we're still being respectful of each other. That's, is how the school committee was when I came here nine years ago. We had our disagreements, we talked it out, and that was it. Came back, it was new business, and that was it. Unfortunately, the last two years haven't been that way. And it was a tough year. And many of you know, I was not to be your chair this year. And here I am again. But I've learned a lot. But I've learned a lot from the experience. I guess it had to happen, and it showed me how strong I am and really showed me that I am focused and why I'm here for the kids. Almi's going to need our support, she needs us as a team, not a divide. That's why I ran again, to make sure that I was here to offer that support for her and not leave her. I believe we have a great team onboard. Roberto, welcome. I'm looking forward to the next two years. Everybody has something great to contribute to the committee. And like I said, let's just be respectful and do the work that needs to get done for our students, now that we're getting this extra money thanks to Dr. Burke. There's a lot of exciting things that we could do to offer more to our students, which they deserve. And with that being said, thank you again so much for your support and believing in me to be your chair for so many years. And for the audience at home, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holidays, school vacation, be safe, enjoy, but do your reading, you know, it never stops. And with this weather, I just want to say, I'm always so proud that our schools, our sidewalks are clean, they're out there working, and our poor crossing guards, they're there through all the elements, and I want to give a shout out to them. So we appreciate you. Everybody in the school district is very much appreciated. We're lucky to have such a great team. We're one, it doesn't matter whether you're on cabinet, or you're cooking, or doing crossing guard, everybody is important and we need you. So I want to wish everybody happy holidays and a happy New Year's. Thank you.
Ms. Carlyle, you would like to say some remarks?
Mary, I don't get to say goodbye to you because we're still neighbors, remember this. But I want to thank you for the many years of service you put in for the Chelsea kids. You had your heart and your soul in it, you did the best job, and you were terrific at what you did. And as far as a new leader, I think we can handle her. She's a little short, but we can handle her.
Yeah, but I was short too, in the class.
Yeah, I didn't want to say that. But I want to thank you for getting this whole group together. When I look out there and I see Sarah, Christine, and my friend Adam over there, and the new superintendent, and Monica, I, you, you have a terrific team, and it's, the best thing for the school committee is that team is out there for us and we can work together to make sure the future of the Chelsea schools are still there. And then I think we're going to be great together, and I want to wish you the best. I, I know I'll see you more, but maybe, I don't know if you're going to put that many hours in with your new job, Mary, as you did for us, because I knew when you were home and when you weren't. I know where you were. But God bless you and the family, and thank you.
Any other, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah. Mr. Wilson, the last one up here. I remember many times running for city council, and Dr. Burke and I would be talking, and she'd keep on squeezing me to come on the school committee, and I'm like, no, 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 no. So finally, I came. As I come, Mary leaves.
That tells you something.
It tells you, yeah, she got what she wanted. She always says, "Tag, you're it." I guess, "Tag, I'm it now." So I just want to thank you. Plus, over the years, besides being a superintendent, you've been a really close friend of mine. We've talked many times, been on to many city events, and I really appreciate that. On the part of coming back next year with new members, and, and you guys are all new to me because this is like my, what, fourth, eighth, ninth month? I don't know how many months I've been here. And yeah, I went a lot. I know each and every one of you guys, ladies, I'll just say personally, I know each and every one of you. It's been an honor knowing you, seeing you guys, talking to you guys over the years. And yeah, you guys are friends and family. As the chairperson said, we're going to disagree on certain things, but it's business, it's nothing personal. And I just want to thank you again, Kelly. Thank you again, Anna, for clarifying what was being said on both parts. And yeah, it's the team here, it's the team out there also. And at the end of the day, those three right there, those three students right there, our future leaders, are the ones we're here for every single day. So thank you, guys.
Any other? Ms. Garcia?
I'm very emotional. Mary, you have been such an amazing role model, leader, mentor, and the list goes on. So thank you. I'll keep it short because I'm going to cry, but thank you for everything that you've done here in this city.
Ms. Alfaro?
I'll keep it short too. Thank you for everything that you have done also for our community. I remember that when the first, you was like the first school, I'm going to cry here now, the first superintendent that welcomed all of the immigrant students when they first were arriving and that nobody were welcoming them, and how you say, yes, Chelsea welcomes everybody regardless, and how you have been at every meeting in the community, at every event in the community, at every meeting at the legislation. When I go and do my advocacy, they will be like, oh, Mary was just here, you missed her. So I'm like, very honored that I got to know you and everybody there on the team. Thank you also because I know that you work hard hours to make sure that our students are getting the best. And Mary, we're going to be seeing you. If I don't see you, I know where to find you.
Ms. Enriquez?
I'm just going to echo what everybody has said about Mary. I will say that it has been an inspiration having you, knowing you, learning from you. I think that it's really an amazing, you are an amazing person, you are a community people person, and that's what really matters, and that's, that we have to continue the journey, the trajectory that we have to be carry on as community servers. Do what we have to do, be in the community person, be in the people person, and be in a server, like a servant of the community that we are representing. So thank you so much, and we will see you around. We're going to miss, miss you, but you're still around. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion, second? No objection? Meeting adjourned, thank you.